We need to have someone else do that.
I'd like to call the order of the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, February 20th. And Mayor Protem Olson will be leading us in the flag salute.
Where's my teleprompter?
Hand over your heart and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we just stand for a moment, in honor of all of those students, teachers, faculty, and all those affected by the massacre that occurred about a week ago, let's just, let us pray. Please be seated.
Mayor and council, I would like to just welcome Gabby Morones to the dais with us this evening. She is going to graciously take over taking notes for me and doing the roll and the vote, so I don't have to worry about it.
Yes, is it possible for you to move that over a little bit? I want to be able to see your face.
I think that's as far as it goes.
Oh, okay, perfect, yeah, thank you.
But I can't see now.
You're tall.
It's okay.
Roll a call, please.
Councilmember Cassidy?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Sampson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Olson?
Here.
Mayor Marshall?
Here.
And presentations, we would like to start with Southern California Edison. We have Luke here with us again, Lucas.
You caught me off guard, if you can tell there. Thank you for your time this evening. It's an honor to present to you all and give you an update on where we stand with our DWR grant resubmital process. The slide we have up here is the same information provided a couple of weeks ago. In red, I have any changes, and so most notably, on the 12th, we did receive additional comments by email from the Department of Water Resources, DWR. And so we have additional information in order to help us review and identify areas where we could add information and strengthen our resubmittals. Another area that they offered to help is to participate in a teleconference or a meeting to further clarify, and so we want to take advantage of that before our resubmital, so that we could confirm our strategy is going to meet their concerns, and if we need to make any other changes, that we're not misinterpreting anything. So you could see that as pending, I don't have a date on that one yet, but we're hoping to achieve that, if not this week, early next week, because you'll notice that March 9th is the next milestone event, and that's when the window opens again to resubmit. And we want to be ready with a strong complete application at that time to best improve our chances for securing awards. And it's going to be, you know, they're going to review on a first come, first complete, and then first award basis at that point. We're looking, also looking forward to capitalize on the DWR providing priority reviews to those applications they received last fall. So we were, and we fall in that category, if they receive new applicants, they'll give us the priority review, and we have ways we could help refine their review process to key in on areas where we've updated it, specifically in areas where they've commented. And the status hasn't changed, there's 58 million left to be awarded to desalination projects through this program, and we're working towards completing applications resubmiting as, on March 9th, to capitalize on the opportunity to increase DSAL capacity on the island. Any questions before I move on from this slide?
I'm okay, go ahead.
This next slide, application support from the city, in response to Councilmember Cassidy, here's some ways where we're already actively working with the city, and I appreciate and thank the city and management for providing staff support to help in these areas. The first is DAC recognition by DWR, that's a lot of acronyms, it's disadvantaged community recognition by Department of Water Resources. So it's our understanding that different agencies have different requirements in order to be fully recognized, and some of the state water board requirements may not have been met in the recent 2016 survey. Support and further pursuit and clarification by the city in this specific area can help, you know, help us understand what needs to be done if there's additional information, and it's something that we're not really empowered to do as a utility, but as a city in their role, they could come in and help support that. And then that'll just further help and mitigate, you know, impact to the customer and capitalize on the opportunity to maximize what the, what's available through the program. Second, the support projects for inclusion in Integrated Regional Water Management, or IRWENT Plan. In this process, we have since registered with IRWENT through IRWENT's OPTI database and plan to submit the projects through that portal. This provides additional value in the application process. And, and again, with the city's support and going through this process with the city and with the IRWENT committee, we feel we're stronger in the resubmital process here. And thirdly, is ongoing city SCE grant coordination meetings. We've actually increased the recurrence of these from monthly to weekly, and just met this morning, so we're looking to continue that on a weekly basis, at least until we get the applications resubmitted to keep everyone on task and provide updates. So, again, just want to express my gratitude and appreciation for making those resources available to us, as we work through this and try to, making sure we're leveraging reports and information already available to include in this resubmital. I think that covers my notes of what I wanted to update here. Councilmember Cassidy, do you have any other questions or clarifications or others?
No, just, correct me if I'm wrong in saying this, because I was asked the question of, wasn't the city already determined to be a disadvantaged community? And so, yes, the city was, but the requirements were geared, or the, the application and the designation was geared more towards HUD, Housing and Urban Development, than it was, and the information that the Department of Water Resources wants is a little bit different information. So if it's my understanding, the Jordan Monroe from the city is meeting with you guys and you're resubmitting to DWR in order to be recognized as a DAC community for DWR, is that all correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, and I believe there may be some additional updates or amendments to that study required. We're still waiting for a formal communication from DWR saying that. They didn't say one way or another, but just the fact that they didn't say they recognize it, kind of put us on alert, so.
Okay, thank you very much for the update.
You're welcome.
Pam Albers, 217 Colli del Sol, I just was wondering, did the city council receive a copy of the DWR comments?
No.
And the grant people that are working on this did not receive a copy of the comments?
I, Denise, do you know if?
I only got the summary from, from Edison. From the Department of Water Resources.
Oh, you did get it?
That's the one that you all got a copy of, yes.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, we did get that.
So I guess my question is, was one of the comments having to do with whether we were providing matching funds or not, was that a criticism, a question, a ding?
I don't believe we, I, I would have to refer to the document, but I don't, I personally don't recall us having to do a match.
Do you recall, is there a question about whether it would be appropriate to include matching funds as opposed to 100% funding?
Yeah, in our review of the application and the comments, there wasn't anything specifically identifying that as a ding, per se, but it was, it was an open item, which may need to be clarified later, and so we want to just be proactive as much as possible for this next time. The, here's how we're summarizing the grant resubmital plan. Since I'm, I am on the agenda, I could also provide additional context on the original submittal in August. Unfortunately, I think it was a quicker effort, there wasn't as much coordination or time for that, so I could give you a quick highlights on the three applications. And, you know, we're not anticipating or we don't intend to pull back any scope in these resubmittals, but we want to wait until we have that teleconference with DWR before we finalize, you know, the different constraints with respect to each application. DSAL Plant 2, that's in the rears, but that's retroactive funding, which we want to take advantage of. That's, that's the plant that was operational as of April of 2016. The second one's a, is a saltwater well enhancement, which would add significant source capacity to our DSAL, the overall DSAL treatment system. So, and by doing that, we could make minor auxiliary enhancements to the facility treatment that's installed right now, minor, you know, pre-treatment, post-treatment updates, and we'd vastly improve production potential and capacity, just by doing a source improvement. And the third one is then increasing our DSAL distribution and storage capacity. So we'd identify that as a limiting factor, you know, if we, with DSAL Plant 2, with additional source production, we don't want to be missing opportunities by not addressing another area within the system. And so by that, we're looking to vastly improve the storage where we could put DSAL-produced water, and extending our distribution to Hamilton Cove, kind of addressing both of those within that item, and so right now, we've identified to upgrade the pipeline between Avalon and Wrigley Reservoir. So those were the three, based on our work that, you know, at the time the submittal was made, which is September 1st, we have continued engineering since then, and we're looking to take advantage of that in this resubmital, and we'll do a calibration of all the values based on the latest engineer's estimates. So, let me make sure. And then, yeah, and, you know, we aren't able to refine the values and delineation at this time, we will come back next council meeting and have that identified. And then even on an interim basis, I'm sure we can communicate that to city manager, or whatever the appropriate channel is, just to get that awareness communicated as soon as we have it available. Are there any questions before I move on from this slide?
I'm okay. Counsel, continue, please.
Okay, so our next steps here, as I've alluded to, review the resubmital plan with DWR, go through the submittal process through the local IRWENT Plan, update city council, receive letters of support to attach to the applications, I believe we routed that through city manager last time and look to do that again this time. And hit that March 9th date with the complete resubmital applications. So I do look forward to returning and providing updates, addressing clarifications, and if there's anything that comes to mind later, you know, you can continue to communicate that through Jordan Monroe, he's been diligent in coordinating with us. And unless there's other questions, I thank you for your time.
I just had a question, it seems, and I might have misunderstood at the last meeting, are you going to attempt to put in more than one of those applications on that March 9th date, or are you, that's the intent?
That's the intent, so there, the window doesn't open, we can't hit the submit button until March 9th.
Okay.
So we want to, you know, identify, yeah, complete 1, 2, all 3, March 8th, so then it's less work in just three clicks on the 9th. But, yeah, like I said, we want to make sure we have that conference call with DWR and confirm alignment, but, yeah, that's the plan.
And tonight on the consent calendar, it's your, we're asking for your authorization to submit those letters?
Yes.
And to go out and ask all the entities, and we've been in contact with SCE to finalize the draft letter that we had, and they had some input, and then to all the people they would like us to reach out to.
Let me ask you a question, if there's just a portion of, of the grant money that we're asking for, that's given to us, how do we prioritize the things that, that we would like to see implemented into our water system to make it a more vast system, that is, is there, is there a process to that, is there a protocol?
Yeah, so are you asking, are you asking beyond the scope of this grant opportunity and projects?
Yeah, well, I'm, within this grant opportunity, let's say we don't get the money that we wanted, but we get a portion of it. How do we appropriate those funds and find, find out what our priorities are, or who decides that, is that something that we do together?
That's, that's a good question, I think most of that's going to be driven by DWR, based on how they decide to award and what they issue funds for, they're going to stipulate what that needs to go towards, based on the applications we submitted, and then it'll be, you know, we'll come back and share that update, and then it'll be, execute accordingly, report progress, report benefit, and, and based on that.
Okay, so we, we, we will or we won't be able to influence the outcome of where those funds are appropriated, what do you think?
It's by project, there's three separate projects.
I understand that, but.
They'll, they'll award 1, 2, or all 3 of the projects.
Oh, really? And it's, and it's complete?
Probably, hopefully, hopefully we're looking for.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Councilman Olson, thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you, yep.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. Uh-huh, nice to see you again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, we are going to announcements and written communications.
I have a few announcements just on the election, make sure everybody knows, if they want to make sure that if they're registered to vote and to which address, to go to lavote.net. The polling place is here at City Hall in the lobby, and we're open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. The deadline to register to vote is March 26th, and vote by mail is April 3rd. And we have a lot of permanent vote by mail, so it's.
Yeah, you do have them. Okay, department head reports.
Good evening, Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works, got a couple of quick items to update you on. City staff met with Catalina Express and the consultant for the sediment study, and the focus of that discussion was finding, the findings from the draft report, and giving that info and discussing that info with the Catalina Express, and then also, we discussed the docking details with them, and how, you know, they operate their equipment, and how we could change those configurations. And the report's due back in council sometime in March here, one of the meetings in March, likely the second meeting. And then we started work on the estimate for the 2006 East Whitley property, and so I additionally acquired about some details on the low mod requirements for some of the tenants, so we'll report back to you on the next meeting with that estimate, and then also with those requirements.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Hey.
As you guys probably realize, this weekend, we had quite a bit of wind coming down the center of the island down there, coming out of the canyons. We had no major issues, we, Friday was a beautiful day, Saturday was a nice day, and we received a lot of boats coming in. A lot of the boats tried to leave Sunday, and all the power boats that left came back, all the sailboats that left, they loved the wind, so, we're, I have nothing special to report.
Just really quick, for those of you who haven't peeked behind the fence down at Vons, they are currently pouring concrete foundation walls, they finished the north wall, and they will continue all around the perimeter of the foundation about as fast as Jordal can deliver the concrete to them. So that's what they're doing right now, hiding behind the fence. Our other two large projects, Zangray is doing really well, though you can see them framing up on the hill, the new building in the back, and Trailhead, of course, is proceeding forward on schedule. So we've got three big projects going forward. Questions for me?
On the Zangray project, because I haven't, I don't go up and around the hill much, but how is that working for traffic and trucks, and are, do they have a lot of big trucks coming in that little narrow road?
Well, they, they're working strictly off the backside of the hill, not around the front by the chimes tower.
Okay.
And if you have been, well, if you haven't been up there, but they've kind of carved out that corner where the old garage used to be, and they're working from that side.
Okay, so that seems to be okay, all right, great, thank you.
Good evening, Captain John Hucking, the LA County Sheriff's Department. With the recent school shooting that happened, I'm getting a lot of calls on what our preparation is here in Avalon for school shootings, and I want to let everybody know that we have a school safety plan in effect. I've also conducted active shooter training with all city employees, and in the near future, I'm going to have a date to be conducting it with all teachers from Avalon School. I'm also working with the Avalon City Fire Department, and we're going to be doing another drill. We do yearly drills as part of the fire, fire drill or earthquake drill, so we're up to date on everything, and like I said, with my experience, 29 years on the sheriff's department, and I just came from a city that had 20-something schools in a two-square mile, I know school safety plans, and we are prepared for anything that might occur in the city of Avalon.
And along those lines, I think that can be, the comments that I'm also getting are the questions is, but I'm, I'm a parent, or I'm a community member, and I guess if there's a school plan, somehow that's disseminated to parents, so they know what the heck's going on, and where to, I mean, does it encompass the community as well?
Yes, it will encompass them, and what we're going to do, we're going to start with the teachers, and then we're going to go to the parents after that and make it open to them if they want to come and see what the plan is.
Okay.
And, and some of it, we can't put out, because it's confidential, because we don't want the quote "bad guys" to know what our plans are, but there are some things that are just common sense that we need to tell the public, so, you know, even if it's not a school incident, any, if they're in a mall in the mainland somewhere, they'll know what to do to protect themselves.
Okay, right.
And on another subject, I just want to confirm to make sure I have this straight, currently, the city of Avalon, you cannot sell marijuana, is that correct? We have not given out any licenses, we, the city has not given out, because it's come to my attention that there is a delivery service right now operating in the city, and we're going to be enforcing those laws, but I want to confirm that nothing has gone out. That should also be a consideration when somebody comes and starts filing an application to legally sell it. If they're already doing it illegally, then I highly recommend that the city takes that into an account for, are they going to be legal when they have the license, you know, and so forth.
Right, okay.
So I at least wanted to bring that up.
Okay.
And I'd like to introduce, we have a new sergeant at Avalon Sheriff's Station, Craig Harmon, and I'll let Craig introduce himself.
Hi, Mayor, honorable council members, my name is Craig Harmon, I'm a new sergeant assigned, I've been coming here for a few months now, you may have seen me, but I'm just really excited to be here, I've been on 30 years, I have extreme, a large history with detective work, so I'll bring that here to the island and help solve some of the crimes here. I also have some experience with active shooters, training with campuses, so we can bring that as well, and I'm just glad to be here and look forward to working with you.
Are you going to be on the street, or on the beat, or where, what are you going to be doing?
I'm going to be doing anything I needed to be doing.
Okay.
So I'll be, I'll be working with a detective, I'll also be on the streets, and I'll be acting as a watch commander.
Okay, great, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and real quick, John, one other thing, Captain, I understand you had your first meeting with your community, that community group?
Yes, we had a community advisory committee, we had our first meeting in the, basically, beginning of February, and it went very well. We have one member from Two Harbors, the county area, and we have two from the city, we're looking for one or two more, so if anybody is interested in that, I put it out in the newspaper, we've talked about it here, they can call me at Avalon Sheriff's Station. And basically, what it is, is just hearing from the community what they want the sheriff's department to focus their attention on, and in return, we tell them what we have been focusing our attention on and what we've been doing. And it's just a good working relationship to be very close to the community.
Excellent, I, a couple of people have approached me and asked about it, and I said, so I'm glad you're announcing that this evening.
Yeah, it was, it worked, it went over very well.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
Question, please?
Yeah.
I'd like to know, how far are we away from some kind of a resolution for the marijuana sales and distribution?
I was going to give you that under my city manager's report, Joe, it will be on.
We can wait for that.
It's just tentatively, we have it scheduled, we're almost complete with it, it should be on the next council agenda, just for you to review, for the review of the application and our rubric and the fees that we would be charging, so, tentatively, it's slated for that meeting.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you, just updates from the Community Service Department, we're going into our spring season, spring, summer typically are busier seasons, so just a couple of things that are coming up, basketball registration, we finish up on Friday registrations, we'll take a, a few on Saturday, but our first day of tryouts is on Saturday this week, so last day of registration on Friday, and then Saturday from 10:00 to 1:00 is tryouts for that. Thursday evening here in council chambers at 5:30, we will start to kick off our Outrigger program again, so second year, city running the Outrigger program, emphasis this year is going to be on a high school program, and then developing the recreation program a little more. We had about 50 paddles last year, and I think we're going to probably be pushing 75, 75 this year. I believe I mentioned this last meeting, the community planting day with the Rotary, mark your calendars, is Wednesday, the 21st, and I'll get, we'll have flyers out a little more specific to the times, but it looks like probably an afternoon planting on Wednesday, the 21st. Spring festival.
Is that tomorrow? Tomorrow, right, tomorrow.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm going out a little bit further, yeah.
March. That's planting trees around Avalon?
Uh, planting, we, we've got some more palms coming in, we did a planting with the Rotary, actually Rotary did a planting with us in September of last year, and so some palms went in, and then we enhanced the, a lot of the landscape beds throughout the community, so some more of that.
There's a couple of trees missing down on lower Metropole, there's, one hibiscus that's missing, it's by the car lot on that side of the street, and then there's a Catalina Toyon berry on the Hotel Metropole side of the street that died out because of saltwater intrusion from, because they were into sidewalks, but I talked to Pete from the conservancy, and, and they've got some trees for us that we can replace the Catalina Toyon berry with, with the hibiscus, it'd be nice to see another hibiscus over by the car lot, on the car lot side.
I will certainly talk to Rotary and see what they have specifically planned for that. Another thing they're going to be doing this year is they're going to be making plants available, so some information will go out, Councilmember Cassidy may have a little more information, but some, a plant list will go out, both plants and tree list will go out to the community, and as we're barging over at cost, they're looking to do that for the community as well, so there'll be order forms for that and opportunity to do that, so that'll be available. And I know the conservancy had some input on that, they've got some, some planting material that'll be part of that project as well.
Yeah, and they'll give us plant, some trees for pretty, pretty good costs, so.
Yeah.
And I'm just going to interrupt, because you know me, I was concerned about the, the things that have the spines and the things that can poke, and, because I don't think there's any room for cactus or pokey things.
Your pokey palm got moved.
Okay, and we're not going to have any more pokey palms?
That one got moved, yes.
Look at all these pokey ones we have, the ones we have around City Hall are not real safe either, they're really, really sharp and pointy, so maybe at some point we can.
Which ones?
I don't know, they're all around over here, anyway, on the side, anyway, but, but I know you're not beautifying. But I know you're not beautifying that area, but in the future, the pokey ones.
No new ones will be introduced.
Okay.
March 29th, Thursday is Spring Festival, mark your calendars for that. We're taking booth reservations now, that's from 5 to 9. And then the Community Egg Day will be on the 31st, Saturday, the 31st, at the lawn at Descanso Beach. And then we'll be doing that in conjunction with Avalon Community Church. We'll be doing a pancake breakfast that morning from 7 to noon. And then lastly, we have the unveiling of the theme for the Fourth of July. And the mayor has the official results in the official sealed envelope. As she starts to open that, some of the choices they had to, we had to work with this year were Avalon Goes Red, White, and Blue, City of Avalon, Iconic Buildings Past and Present, Only on Catalina, Avalon the Beautiful, Living the Beach Life, and then Avalon a Real Firecracker. And the results are.
Joe, may we have a drum roll, please? Avalon the Beautiful, Living the Beach Life.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So that will be our theme for the 2018 parade this year.
Great.
Did you guys have an idea of the grand marshal for this parade? Because I would really like to suggest that we haven't had, like, anything to honor the patriarchs of Avalon, the ladies of Avalon, and I think it would be a pretty honorable thing because there's a lot of ladies in this town that have contributed to the community for, you know, since day one. And I think it's about time we honor them too. So just a suggestion, and.
I'm open to all those suggestions, so if you've got somebody specifically in mind or a couple of people, I'd love to hear them.
There's quite a few.
Yeah, so we haven't, we haven't chosen.
It's hard to put a finger on one, it's like the veterans.
So how, I forget, how, we do it every year. Do we give you nominations, does the community nominate? How do you want us to handle it this year?
I'd certainly, being new to the community, that would be helpful if I had some nominations. And then, you know, possibly there's a theme around, you know, a few of them that we could do at the same time. It doesn't necessarily have to be one person.
I'll get you a list.
Okay, good.
So, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
All right, that does it for the department heads, city manager report.
Just have a couple of items. Per city council's direction last time to bring back the topic of bikes and bike rentals in town. That is slated tentatively on the March 6th agenda. As you know, I try to balance things out so you guys aren't here till 11, 12 o'clock at night. And then the other thing, the cannabis application will also be on there. I just wanted to note, just for your reference, that last council meeting, you had approved 15,000 a month for an interim, it was up to six months, I believe, for the finance department for the senior accounting position. We are indefinitely putting that on hold, so we are not spending those monies. And then, I'm happy to report that we received five proposals for the shower, restroom contract. We had one for shower only, one for restroom only, and then three that were for both. We are in the process of evaluating each one of those, and we will be interviewing them also. And then at the next council meeting, you'll be making that determination.
Let me ask, go back to the bikes. Because we're not moving on it, and I don't know which way, how we would do this, but if everybody goes out and buys bikes now, then the bag is open, right? And then to come back at a later day and try to close the gates, the bikes are already there, right? So there's nothing we can do about that? We can't say, get rid of your bikes, you've already bought them? I guess that's, I'm looking at Scott.
So were you talking about having a moratorium of ceasing everything, or was just to study and discuss how you wanted to move forward?
Well, it's to study and discuss, but if, let's say someone was of the opinion that they didn't perhaps want every hotel to run out and get bikes now, but then they do, and then we go, oh, but now we want to, we think, oh, gosh, that's.
Scott, what's your?
You'd have to have council action to, once you open the program, unless you set a limit on it at the beginning.
No, I understand, but as of tomorrow, since we're not taking any action, and everybody goes out and buys bicycles, every hotel in town buys bikes, then it's already there and you can't go backwards and say, now stop and remove your bikes, right?
No, you can't.
Could we consider a moratorium at this point?
It's not on the agenda.
It has to be on the agenda.
Yes.
Does council consider a moratorium?
I guess we need the information.
Until we figure it out, because we're.
Well, we got to get the information.
Yeah.
I would like to get information on it.
Oh, of course, then we will, but I know that there's, there's been inquiries about other people wanting bicycles and so.
And, Dan, I understand.
So, okay. All right, so that'll be on the next one. Okay.
Denise, I just had a question regarding the finance position. You're saying, did you say that we're putting that on hold?
Yes, that's correct.
Can we get more information, why?
Because the position that we were trying to fill isn't, at this point, going to be going away. So we are still retaining that person.
Fantastic.
And we're still, but we're recruiting for future.
Yes, we still have that position advertised in the papers and on our website.
Okay, city attorney report?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Councilmember reports. Who would like to start? Get this party started.
Want to go?
Sure.
All right. Wednesday, February 7th, I attended the Gateway City's Council of Government Board meeting. Then on Friday, February 9th, I attended the Gateway City's Transportation Summit that was hosted by Long Beach Mayor Robert Garcia. It was a conversation about all things transportation in our Gateway region. It included speakers, which were the Metro Chief Executive Officer Phil Washington, Caltrans District 7 Director Carrie Bowen, and many members of the Gateway Council of Governments employees. And the big takeaway for the half-day session for me was the funding opportunities and sources for the Gateway Cog and the city's panel. There's funding opportunities through local return, Measure M, subregional equity funds. There's also cap and trade funds available, which is something that we hadn't, haven't really participated too much in in the past, but there's some good opportunity there. And also, there's some public and private funding opportunities through Metro and their small business area. So hopefully, we at the city can look into some of those other funding opportunities. And I've transferred all of that information over. And then on Saturday, February 11th, myself, Mayor Marshall, and Mayor Protem Olson, and members of the, a few members of the community, attended the grand reopening of the Carnival Cruise Ship Terminal in Long Beach, which was a good opportunity for the eight of us representing Avalon to be there and show support for Carnival and how much business that they do bring to our community, and thanking them for using, calling upon us as a destination. And then I wanted to let the community know, I'm sorry it's taken a little bit longer, but the community mural that about 50 members of the community came out to help paint, finally was completed yesterday. We grommeted all of the tiles, and that was about a nine-hour total project, just grometing. So those will be, started to be hung this week, you'll see later this week. And I want to thank David Lee and his family, and then Dan and Kevin Hunky for all of the help and support, and then, of course, members of the community for coming out. It's, they're gorgeous tiles, it's going to be really fun to see hanging up, and will look a lot better than a construction project, so.
They are.
I think that's all I have.
Okay. Councilman Hernandez?
I'm good this week.
Okay. Councilmember Samson?
I thank Cindy for talking about Carnival, except it was on the 10th.
Oops.
And I have nothing else to report.
And the food was delicious. Oh, my God. Okay. And the shortstop program was held here last week. We had 12 kids from the community come with their parents. We had two attorneys and the counselors, they were in this building. And these are at-risk kids, and it's kind of an intervention program. I was able to stay for about an hour and a half. It was phenomenal. They treated every kid like, if you're going to court, you're no longer a name, you are a number. They had a number on their chest, they made them stand up, their hands down by their sides. They could not say, I don't know. It had to be, yes, sir, no, sir. It was, it was very touching and very emotional, and I'm looking for the success of that program to, to help with our youth and help our youth in the community and at school as well. So it was wonderful. Also want to give a shout out to, there was the, was that boat wreck in December, and all of that debris has been out, out at Pebbley Beach. And the boat owner, of course, was not held responsible or made to clean that up, which it is a responsibility for them to do. So Dwayne Morris, Tricia, Tricia Edwards, Claudia Green from Overtown, and Doug Gillian, they cleaned it up. They took, and if I missed anybody, I'm sorry, they took it to the dump, they paid between $6 and $750, something like that, to get it dumped, had to separate it all. And that's a lot for the, that's way above and beyond what should happen. So I guess I urge the county, when, when there are accidents, boat accidents outside and in your jurisdiction, that you need to follow up. I mean, at a minimum, that guy should have been there cleaning up, if he's still in town. I don't know who he is. But anyway, kudos to all of you, that's amazing. And that's all I have. So, oral communications. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to three minutes and no action will be taken.
Good evening. I'm here first for Paula Patterson, who could not be here tonight with a very quick announcement. The Catalina Progressive Action Coalition is inviting all of the community to attend a city council and mayoral candidates forum for the community of Avalon, Monday, March 12th, 6:30 to 9 o'clock PM here in City Hall Council Chambers. The candidates will be provided with questions based on community input before the forum so that they can be prepared. This isn't a try to catch ya. It's like, how do you feel about this? So they will have an opportunity to review the questions, have prepared answers, and there'll be a casual meet and greet after the meeting. Now, I'm going to put on my Leslie Warner hat, 306 Whitley. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have a letter to the editor for the Catalina Islander that I would like to share. Avalon voters are faced with a huge and far-reaching financial decision on the April 2018 ballot. While I truly do believe that we need a medical facility in Avalon, I feel that this measure, as proposed, gives a carte blanche ticket to the hospital administration for an unknown period of time. I would like to suggest that we explore these questions as a community before we cast our votes. Has the hospital thoroughly and fully researched other funding sources that do not impact residents and visitors, and what are those options? Where will the hospital be built? How much will the land cost? Or what lease agreement will be executed? And why are those details not being provided before we vote on this measure? How will this tax impact our local residents who must travel to the mainland often and may have economic challenges? If this tax passes, as I understand it, several weeks afterwards, subsidized commuter books will be $200. Imagine, as the years go by, how much higher the cost will be as costs go up for our cross-channel carriers. Why does the tax not include the private boat passengers that arrive, moor, and depart from Avalon Bay? Hospital admin told me that the California State Land Commission would not allow it. After contacting the State Land Commission and receiving the letter that was sent to our Avalon City Attorney, the following information was provided, and I quote, "The staff of State Land's Commission thus agrees with the city, Avalon, conclusion that proceeds from the local nondiscriminatory tax, which is the hospital tax, on activities that are located on granted tide and submerged land, which is our moorings, may be used for local non-trust purposes, which is the hospital." So, to be clear, if we're going to make this equitable and charge everyone that comes to the island, why are the boaters not included? Why is there not a term limit on this tax? Hospital ad, is my time up?
Yeah.
I have two more. May I finish, please?
Since you did something for Paula.
Thank you. Hospital admin has stated that the timeframe is 40 years. Are we to give the hospital millions of dollars for the next four decades, at which point the hospital facility may need costly repairs or replacement? Are we willing to fund this hospital for decades beyond that? And how do we know for certain that new programs initiated by the hospital and subsidized by this track, tax, will bring more profit to the hospital? How can we be sure that people will want to come to Avalon for plastic surgery or other elective treatments and pay rural hospital rates when they have much more sophisticated, professional, and most likely affordable options on the mainland? Let us be prudent in deciding upon this tax and consider all the ramifications before we approve it. Why not send it back to the drawing board and insist it be more specific and equitable for all concerned? Thank you for the extra time.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else have? Mr. Watson?
Good evening. Jim Watson, 120 Whitley.
Dave Greer, 355 Descanso.
Dave and I are here tonight representing both the Avalon Lions Club and the American Red Cross. And just to let everybody know that this Saturday, the 24th, we will be conducting a program called the Sound the Alarm Home Fire Campaign. It is primarily a Red Cross program, and the way that it works is appointments are made at residences, residences only, around town on a specific day. And on that appointed day, teams of friendly, helpful volunteers will come around to meet those appointments and to install smoke alarms. And it was a national grant given to the Red Cross, but there's been a tradition of Red Cross and Lions Club teaming up together on these kinds of things. So anyway, on Saturday, when you see a bunch of people walking around in red Lions Club shirts or Red Cross shirts, that's what it's going to be. I don't know if I mentioned, it's free of charge, all Red Cross services are free of charge, and we will have teams of not only installers, but there will be educators and documenters working with the residents to give them escape plans, for example, the building catches on fire, meeting places out in front of the building to make sure that everybody got out of the building okay, and that kind of thing, so. And these, by the way, are, these are more state-of-the-art smoke alarms. They're not your grandfather's smoke alarms, they go for 10 years without having to replace the battery, and they won't go off every time you burn toast, you know, like I do. So, anyway, there's some limited availability if anybody is interested. The best way to get in touch with us is email avalonlionsclub@gmail.com.
Great, thank you.
You will have translators there also.
Well, yes, we have a number of Spanish speakers. We probably could use some more. So we've got quite a few appointments already made up, so. Yes, please send us an email, avalonlionsclub@gmail.com.
It's a great program.
Yes, I just, thank you.
Thank you.
Judy Greer, 355 Descanso Avenue. And I want to talk as the president of the Friends of the Avalon Library. As you know, we have a new librarian, she has lots of things starting to happen at the library, and as we hoped would happen, it's becoming more of a community center where there's something happening all the time. So I encourage you, please to come, use the library as much as you can, you can make an appointment, and Morgan will work with you on your digital device. If you, you know, can't figure out how to set up an email on your phone, you can ask her and make an appointment. her and make an appointment, and she will help you with things like that. In addition, on the 21st, that's February 21st, that's tomorrow, we are having a magic show. It's 3:30. It should be outside the library. And we've had these people before. And this one is paid for by the County of LA. Many more activities that we're having now are being paid for by the county library system. So we're very happy to announce those things. Stop by the library, 3:30 tomorrow with little kids especially, but really any age. If magic is interesting to you, then you want to be there. March 1st, then, is we will have a career seminar at 7:00 PM at the library. May 12th is the Free Comic Book Day. This is targeted for teenagers, but if you like comic books, this is a very good thing to do. And she's going to have all kinds of free comic books that she's going to give out. We're looking into a scamming prevention seminar. And we're hoping that the primetimers will be able to come, but anyone will be welcome. And that's going to be, pretty soon, watch for that. We will also have health seminars like we had last year. They're evening things where someone will come from the hospital and talk about the various aspects of things they do and how you can better use the services there. Don't forget the book club. It's the fourth Tuesday of the month at the library. The books are various. The discussions are great, whether you read the book or not. You can partake of the discussions, and they're quite lively and interesting. We hope also to be at Spring Fest, and we will have forms and applications so we can make it easy for you to get a library card. And remember, if you get a library card, they will give you the number to the Wi-Fi where you can sit outside our library and use the free Wi-Fi at any time, 24 hours a day. So that's my.
That's a lot of news from the library. Thank you. Is that it from the community? Okay, we will go to the consent calendar.
There will be nine items on the consent calendar. Number one, approve actions from the February 6, 2018, city council meeting. Number two, approve warrants for the total disbursement for the month of January totaling This consists of warrants in the amount of $1,706,314.43, two payrolls in the amount of $482,415.69, seven electronic fund transfers in the amount of $207,578.09. Number three, there are three components to this item. Number one, amend the fiscal year '17, '18 budget by adding $13,000 to the Harbor Fund for the anticipated repair of float four. Number two, make the finding that procurement of the float hinges can be made more economically, efficiently, by using a manufacturer that made hinges for float five. Number three, authorize expenditure to Kavanaugh Machine Works for $13,137.07 for the replacement of two large stainless steel hinges for float four. Number four, approve sending a letter in support of Southern California Edison's Proposition One funding request. Number five, adopt resolution declaring equipment listed in resolution as surplus property and authorize the city manager to dispose of it in accordance with city policy. Number six, authorize the interim city manager to contract temporary grants management services for an amount not to exceed $5,000 per month for up to six, for a six-month period. Number seven, approve the expenditure of the budget amounted for $40,000 for the 2018 July 4th celebration activities. Number eight, authorize the adoption of a policy to discount the community service program and facility use fees for an amount of 20% of the fee for City of Avalon employees and their immediate families. Number nine, approve the placement and authorize the purchase of three additional inflatable for the South Beach inflatable structure and one new two-piece structure on Middle Beach in the amount of $7,980 from commercial recreation specialists.
Okay, council. What's your pleasure?
I just have a question for number nine. Just wondering how much bigger, maybe Dan can answer it, how much bigger the extensions on the floats are going to be that are going to be installed in the bay? Is that nine?
Yes.
So we're going to get new floats? Is this going to make it a lot bigger, bulkier? Is it just going to be longer?
Yeah, the South Beach is just going to add 10 feet to it. So you've got a structure now that's about 45 feet, so it's adding another 10 feet to it. And then Middle Beach, it's a 20-foot, 20-foot structure.
Okay.
A smaller piece.
I'm concerned about the, about the sand problem we have in the harbor and the depth of the sand. I hope you can maybe vet my concerns, maybe run them by Bob, and make sure that there's enough water underneath the structure.
So I met with the lifeguard captain, and we've gone through that. I think June is when we typically have some of our lowest tides. Webbit comes out with their recommended depths, and we meet those throughout the, and we meet those throughout the season. The piece on Middle Beach is a much smaller piece for younger kids, and it's only requiring a four-foot depth for that.
All right. Yeah, South Beach is my concern. It's just getting worse and worse every week, so. All right, thanks.
And will the, will the big float be out there too on Middle Beach as well? Is that going to go back in?
The swim float?
The swim float?
Yes. Yeah, the plan is to have South Beach the same arrangement we had last year with the inflatables and then the water polo course. And then Middle Beach would be the swim float, and just off of that would be the small structure for the younger kids.
Okay.
There'll be a float for outriggers too, down where they were?
And keeping the outrigger float there out by the blue water. Yes.
Number six.
Okay, item number six, we're pulling. Any others? If, is there any comment on the other items on consent before we go to a vote?
Move one to five and seven and eight and nine.
Okay, one, five, seven, eight, and nine. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Call for the vote.
All ayes.
The only question I have about six is that, did you get a chance to check any references?
Both companies had on their website, they had all kinds of references. I did not call them yet, no, only. And the recommendation is up to that 5,000, so I can do that before we make that determination. But I am leaning towards Townsend.
Okay.
Because I feel like they gave a much more detailed proposal to us, and it covered a lot more.
And could you, when you talk to them, could you also talk about how much travel they anticipate?
The good news, it's included in their bid.
Included one, but I'm just wondering, is there $1,000 for the travel every month? Every month?
Oh.
That's the thing that's talking about.
I'd like to ask if, before you move on that, I'm going to, I've got a guy calling you from the League of California Cities. He's going to be possibly calling you tomorrow.
Okay.
From Amoresco. And they're, they don't charge anything for their services. They, they take the payout of their services out of what they save the city from the grants that they write, so. And I will have him call you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Move staff on six. Oops, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I just want to make a comment. I'm a little not concerned. The, the kinds, I guess the staff is going to be working with these folks to say the kinds of grants they would like to go after.
Yes, they come and they interview us, and they, as the Townsend one, they had already done their homework. This was back in last spring also. And they knew all the projects that we were working on and, yes. They interview us, they work with staff, they don't go after anything that is not going to be a benefit to us.
Right.
And this is just to fill our gap right now, as well as we've had our hands slapped a couple times from a couple different entities that were, where's your reports? You're late on this. And they had slipped through. And we're doing our best to keep abreast of the grants, the existing ones that we have, and we just don't want that to happen anymore. And we don't want to lose out on any that we could be pursuing.
So I guess the thing, so not knowing funding cycles of what you may be looking at, because it would be all over the place, so all of this, so then they say, okay, and now you submit, these are due September. Okay. Can they write them up now? And then, I mean, the six months could turn into much longer just because, and then I'm a little concerned if we're very successful in getting a lot of grants, our ability to manage those grants after we get them, because the staff is really tapped out, I think. So that's just my concern going forward, that I think we need to, you know, if they submit, I don't know how many they can do, but if they can submit eight grants and they get them all, and five of them go to Bob Greenlaw, and, you know, three of them go to Dan, and then, I guess the other thing that I guess, and they know, is, number one, do we write staff into the grants to assist, so we can hire additional people to do the things once we get them? I guess I'm just a little worried about, I think you hear my, my.
So your worry is that we would have to keep retaining them to finish those grants, Annie? Is that your concern?
To either finish them, or let's say it's like Edison, and then they go, oh, well, now you got to come back and you got to do some more things, and you have two or three months to fix these up. And, I mean.
I will specifically ask both those companies that question, if our grants position is filled again, that what happens to the grants that they've already.
And just a little concerned if, I mean, if they submit. Okay, I guess it, maybe it'd also be interesting to find out what the staff is saying they want to work on with grants at some point, at least keep us in the loop on what, what we're looking for.
Okay.
Yeah, and maybe that would help ease my mind a little, but I'm just a little nervous. So if they're so successful and we get.
I think that a lot of that is outlined in our budget for all the projects that you know that we're trying to work on, and any monies that are out there for all our projects, mainly capital improvement projects or any recreation things that Dan has on his wish list. Absolutely, Annie, you guys would be kept abreast of which ones we're working on.
Kind of, a lot of the innovative stuff, how we talk about electric charging stations and things like that. I don't know that that's necessarily in our purview right now, but, so I'd be curious to see how far out, how far out we're going to reach.
Okay.
So, yeah. Or like if there's grants for additional law enforcement, or, I mean, you know, an SRO in the schools, or, you know, whatever, kind of that way, too.
Okay.
Move staff on six.
I'll second.
For the questions? Call for the vote. Okay.
So this is, so this is just to vet the two different companies. We're not selecting them yet, correct?
No, you're authorizing me, Joe, to pick one, well.
Does it have to be one of these companies?
If.
Because I got Amoresco here.
If that company is even similar and offers the same stuff that you say they're not charging us, but they must be getting a percentage of the grants that they receive.
Absolutely.
And then do they, Joe, follow everything that's outlined from the beginning of the grant to the end of the grant? Or once they get the grants? Because a lot of, a lot of the other companies, if they just get a percentage of whatever grant monies we receive, it's still up, then it's up to staff to follow the grant through, do the administration of all.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted you to give them a chance because.
Absolutely, Joe, I will call them.
It's an offer that's too good to be true. I mean, nothing's for free. So, yeah, they're obviously going to get paid somehow, but what they swear is that they will get paid out of the money that they save the community by the work that they do and the grants that they get. So it's basically, they're going to be saving us money, and the money they save us, that's how they get paid. So, anyway, I just want, I want you to give them a shot. I've mentioned it multiple times before. Actually, this guy's come over, Ken Casey, and he's made a presentation to the last city manager. I believe he's called Mr. Greenwald once or twice, and they've never had a chance to hook up yet. But before we go ahead and make this decision, I would, I would just like you guys to hear this guy out, because it sounds like something that would benefit our community.
Then I could bring this item back at the next council meeting.
Okay.
If that's council's direction.
And then just one other quick thing, I'm sorry. Under, under the first one, California Consulting, they say the per-grant options, so if they, if they get a $10,000 grant, we pay them $1,000, is that correct? And if they get over $250,000, we give them $8,000 to $12,000, is that correct? Or we're just going to go by the retainer option and not the per-grant option?
We were going by the retainer one.
Okay.
I kind of understood this a little bit differently as well. I was of the understanding that what we're looking for in a temporary service is to actually handle the grants that we currently have as well, that we have a position that is not being filled at this particular time, and, but the work still needs to get done. So this company is actually going to do the work that we've fallen behind on.
Yes, correct.
So it's like a temporary services.
Existing and any new, that once they get together with staff and what our needs are.
Okay.
So you did have a first and a second. There was a vote, but I don't know if Joe voted. So now, do you want me to bring this item back to you after I have researched his firm?
Yes. Yes, or, yes, or, yeah, I think so. Unless it's urgent. I mean, I know we need help.
But the vote's just authorized the city manager to pick somebody.
Yeah.
So could we make it broad, so that then if you found out that, unless we're, we're doing something wrong in the bidding process, if we're really not, and if you get information, Dr. Amoresco would give them the same information we got here, you could then include it and review it? Would that be okay?
Okay.
I think the motion is to grant the city manager authority of $5,000 a month for, I think, a six-month period for grant services.
Yeah, so if it, okay, that's perfect. Okay.
So that was, that was all ayes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Item number 10, come on down. Bob Mischer.
And I just want to congratulate the council, because you're a little over an hour ahead of last time.
Change, screw down.
It took us an hour and 50 minutes to get to consent last night.
But who's counting?
Who's watching that clock?
And there are some summaries on the table over there, I understand, if somebody went to the.
Yes, we put a few on the table there for anyone that would like.
Perfect.
Well, good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members. Tonight is the discussion of our mid-year financial results. Back in September of last year, the budget was adopted. It was operationally balanced. In other words, it was in the black. It utilized $1.1 million of excess net revenues over the expenditures from prior years for projects like the green pier pilings, sewer and street infrastructure, or also known as the 2017 Global CIP. And it added a few hundred thousand dollars to our general fund cash reserves. That was the budget that was adopted last September. Looking at how our actual results compare to the adopted budget, let's look at the revenues first. The numbers in the far left of the description, those numbers are for reference only, and they're consistent with what was in the published budget. And I've rounded to, I've shown the numbers in millions just for saving space on the slide here and to make it a little less confusing. The first column of numbers is, shows the actual results as of December. And the second half is estimated based on prior year and what's happened so far this year. And then the third column of numbers is the addition of the first and the second half together, projecting how we'll end up with the year end. The second last column is, represents the budget. And then the last column is whether we're over or under the budget. The larger variances, for instance, on the general fund, the 1.3 decrease and the harbor of .7. of .7, those are primarily due to projects that were budgeted that have not yet gone underway or they're just in the initial stages, and the revenues, which those would be grant-funded projects such as the mole refurbishment and rehab, and in, for the general fund, that was a riprap refurbishment from storm damage from 2014. Both of those are grant-funded, if we do have expenditures in this fiscal year, then we would get the reimbursements from those grants, but for the purposes tonight, I've, I've shown those as not occurring yet, until next year we'll, we'll carry those over. Any questions on the revenue?
No.
Okay. The next slide is, are the expenditures for the city? And you'll see again, the general fund and the harbor have the larger variances, and again, those are the riprap repair for the general fund and the harbor mole restoration, and also the Green Pier hasn't started yet. But overall, the, the revenues and the expenditures, especially operational, operationally, are very close to what, what was budgeted. The next slide shows the net change in position, so if you take your, your revenues less your expenditures, you get the net change, or if you're a private business, that would be your net profit, and you can see that in the very last column, as far as percentage of, of revenues, being a $30 million agency, the, the variances are fairly small. The next slide shows the same numbers, just summarized with one line for the revenues, one line for the expenditures, and the net change in position. The next slide is labeled fund balances. The first column of numbers shows the beginning balance as of the end of last year, the beginning of this fiscal year, the changes that were in the previous slides, the net change in position for each of the funds, and then the projected ending fund balances. The carryover column represents the net result of the mole project, what would be the city's match, the required match for this, for the mole, and the required match for the riprap project, that'd be the net change, so we'd get the grant reimbursement and we'd have a little bit larger expenditures. Taking those into consideration, the available balance for the whole agency would be about $15 million in cash balance at the end of this fiscal year. So in summary, the, the mid-year results demonstrate that the city is on course with the adopted budget, no surprises, it's utilizing a portion of prior year's excess as, as planned, and the projected fund balances as of the end of June, for the general fund, the internal services and transit, those were almost $7 million for projected ending balance, that represents about six months of operating funds, but a portion of that should be used for capital. I'm showing the, the total balance of cash, it represents about half of our annual operating So if for some reason our revenue stream dried up completely, we'd be able to have six months to figure out a plan of action is what that means. The housing authority has about $5 million, that's all restricted or designated fund money, we wouldn't be able to use that for anything except for housing. The harbor fund is about a million and a half, which represents about three months of their operating budget. The solid waste fund is at about one, a little over $1 million, that's about seven months of operating, but that includes, we need to also be concerned about the landfill, the future landfill closing, so we should continue to have a larger balance in that fund. And the sewer and saltwater, at the end of this fiscal year, will have nominal balances at the end due to the 2017 Global CIP project that we're just, that we've just recently So our recommendation is to receive the report of the mid-year financial results, comparing it to the fiscal year 1718 budget, and then we're proposing a, a few budget amendments. The chief administrative officer's labor costs that were approved in December, we didn't formally ask for a budget amendment, so we're asking that the budget be amended to account for that. Also, in December, the management aid retroactive compensation was approved, we're asking that that also be included in an amended budget. Converting a part-time administrative assistant for Public Works to a full-time administrative assistant, and then the $13,000 harbor float hinges, that should be omitted from this since you just approved that in consent as an amended item. And then the $18,000 of additional harbor overtime, when we budgeted the fiscal year 1718, we were extremely conservative on the overtime, I looked at our prior year's history for the last three years, we budgeted $42,000, the, the average of the last three years was in excess of $60,000, we're, we're asking for the budget to be amended to reflect what prior year's history has been for the harbor overtime. And I'm available for any questions.
So when you do these budget things, you, you take into account sales tax and all of that stuff for balancing when you talk about our revenues?
Yes, we have over 200 accounts for revenue and over 500 accounts for expenditures, and I look at each one of those, I focus on larger variances that are, for the year, maybe over $20,000 variance, research those, and taking consideration things like the Atwater Hotel closing, the land tours for Island Company.
Right.
Those type of things that, that we know about today that we didn't know for certain in, in September.
That's exactly where I was going, thank you.
Bob, I have a couple of questions, but the, the proposed budget amendments, the 18,000 CAO labor cost which we approved was to fill, I believe it was to fill the interim city manager position.
Yes.
So that position would have already been budgeted, but we're not currently spending on that position, so does this, is this really a true amendment? Or is it just basically moving it from one, one person to another?
You still have expenditures.
Got it, okay, and then the, thank you for the info on the harbor, and then it seems very low, the conversion of a part-time admin assistant to full-time for Public Works at $10,000, that seemed really low, so I guess my question is, what are we, what are we considering part-time, is that 30 hours and under?
Well, it would be for the additional hours, and it's for the remaining part of this year, so we're already in.
Only for five months then?
Or four months.
Four months.
So that's the next budget we'd be putting in.
That position is a full-time position.
Right, and then do we know where we are with the TOT tax right now?
I'll be publishing a report tomorrow, the, the TOT is, has, is about 2% higher than, than prior year so far year-to-date, or for the last 12 trailing months.
Okay, and then what is, when you were talking about the projected fund balances, the general fund, internal services and transit, six months operating, what is typical for our size budget, a six-month of reserve or, or where you say this is what we have?
So when, if I say that we have six months of cash, then our operating costs would be about twice that, so you just multiply it by two.
I, I think our point was for a city with a budget that Avalon has.
Of our size.
What would, what's the going rate for how many months you'd have in reserve?
Oh, well, well.
That's what I meant.
Okay, the, as far as operating cash only, it's recommended to have about three to four months, however, then we also should have a capital reserve which we don't have, and we should, you know, the city should develop a, a capital reserve based on long-term projections, so that's something that we yet need, that we still need to do.
Okay.
So once you know your long-term projections of what projects you need to do in the next 10 years or so, then you look at the cost of those projects, what the cash needs will be for those, take those in consideration, then on top of the capital projects, your operating cash reserves should be about three, three, three or four months in addition to the capital reserve.
Okay, and then something that you said just sparked the thought, and this question is probably for Denise, the cease and desist order that we had, have we completed and met all the requirements of that?
There's still some ongoing ones, like the sewer system management plan, there's an audit that needs to be done at least every two years in March timeframe, and we have till 2019, correct, June 30th of 2019, Scott?
Yeah.
To be zero readings during.
I think we have another year for this, what's called the zero TMDL, which means nothing going into the harbor, no, no detectable solids, and we have to maintain that ongoing. So we are currently compliant with the terms of the cease and desist, but there are projects that we need to keep doing to make certain that the harbor remains clean.
And we've implemented it into our own programs already.
Got it.
And the, the sewer fund is at a nominal balance at the end of this year, but the taxes, we increased the assessment for those to, to enable us to have over $600,000 of projects a year.
Got it, okay.
So despite that the, the balance is, is at a low, low right now, we'll have another $600,000 in next fiscal year's taxes.
Thank you.
So I have a question about, is this the time to say about if there's any other projects you want by the end of the year? Because I think, for example, there was a discussion about putting stairs between the tuna club and the yacht clubs, because right now the access down there is pretty hazardous when people either take their dogs or there's kayaks along, I'm kind of looking at Bob, putting, putting their kayaks along there, and people are just jumping down, and I think if, and that's how they're using it, so I think it's dangerous, so there was a discussion about having some stairs placed down there, some steps placed in there, and I know it got kind of crazy because the yacht club said, I said something, because people let their dogs swim there and they said, oh my God, it's a dog park, well, it's not a dog park, it's just something that makes things more accessible, do we discuss that now?
I think that that would be a project that we, at our budget planning for our next fiscal year, that we would be putting that into our budget.
I'm just concerned that, that then they wouldn't be built until August or September or whatever, when that's the middle of our summer.
They won't get permitted till August or September.
I got more concern about South Beach, I mean, we're, South Beach is history right now.
But they're working on that, this is, but this would be something kind of new, and I, another thing I wanted to bring up, there was a discussion about putting some kind of shade covers down in parts of Front Street because it just, it really gets hot there and, and I know it was a discussion, but I don't know, do we wait again until the middle of summer before something like that can be done, or do we say, I don't know? I guess.
I think those are budget requests for the next fiscal year's budget.
Well, that's a shame.
We could look into like shade covers, Annie, and come back with a, a cost estimate and something to amend the budget again, and I mean, that's something we could definitely look into, that would be a lot easier, shade covers along Front Street versus.
Steps going in the ocean.
Stairs going into the ocean with the coastal commission.
Really, so when, when those stairs got put out by, with the storm, we had to go to the coastal commission to replace those stairs?
The dive park? One of the ones that stepped each, got repaired, they were, they were pre-existing, and they want to put new ones in.
Well, there, there were stairs where I'm talking about, too.
The yacht club and the tuna club?
Yeah, those ones that are right there, it's closest to the tuna yacht club where people, and they even have a doggy bag container there, and there were some steps there that are no longer there, or there's remnants of, you know what I'm talking about, Joe, don't you, can't you see that?
I know exactly what you're talking about, I don't really remember them, but I'm, I just hate to, I, I want, I want to see those things put in, but I just can't get South Beach off my mind, I, I just think we ought to, but we have priorities and then we have,
right.
We have luxuries and wish lists and things, and.
I know.
I'd like to see our staff concentrate on what is absolutely necessary, but, you know, that's great, I mean, yeah, that's a great little beach over there, a little dog beach, and I know what you're talking about, it's right next to the yacht club where that used to be, but I think until we assess exactly what the problem is with our seawall, then we're not going to be able to understand exactly how the tides work against the concrete that we're, we're projecting to put in here, so I think we're just getting a little bit ahead of ourselves, although I totally respect your, what you're trying to do because you're trying to make the city more beautiful, and I absolutely agree with you on that, and, and more accessible, harbor more accessible as well, so.
So if we have to hold off, I guess, we have to hold off, but I'd like you to look at shade class, maybe, maybe we could find some money somewhere, donations, I don't know. Okay, let me ask another question, trash cans, Ben?
Oh, God. Please, yes.
Because we didn't, we've never gotten an answer on the trash cans?
No, we didn't.
The recycles versus.
So we're gonna bring the trash cans forward, I believe, in two more meetings, so at the end of March, we're gonna roll that out to you, and so we'll be talking about the 150 or so thousand recycle grant, and then an additional amount because for the trash cans, trash receptacles themselves, so put them in combination, those two together, you can get a complete package, hopefully at 100 locations.
Okay. But they didn't, they didn't give permission for us to use the recycle grant.
So we're gonna design, hopefully we're gonna design everything with the recycle grant, and then you make a similar trash can receptacle.
Wonderful.
So it would look, and one would, you know, have the logo for trash versus, you know, the recycling.
Right, okay, great, thanks.
I have a question for Bob, um, Bob Mesher, please. So I, you know, the League of California Cities has projected that unfunded liabilities, health insurance plans, retirement pensions are gonna double, from 8% of the California budget to 16%, I'm curious, since I, I would like to see the longevity of our budget be sound, if, if we have to be concerned about those same items on our budget, and what, and may I ask, what is the percentage of? and may I ask, what is the percentage of our hospital costs and our retirement costs and our liabilities towards our retired employees? Is it, is it around 8% or?
Eight, 8% of-
Of our budget? Of our, would it be the general fund that we pay out in?
I, I haven't compared what our, you're talking about our, our retired, our retirees that are, have already retired or-
They have already retired. Not the ones, yeah, that what we're already spending in our budget on retirements.
I would have to come back to you on that. I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we are, have a sound budget and we're able to accommodate our retirement plans and pensions and our liabilities that we're, we're looking at there. Because like I said, the league says that California is going to be facing hardships on their budget when it comes to that.
I, I have looked at our pension costs in particular.
Yes, sir.
Our pension costs are, are better than most cities in California as far as what our projected increase is going to be. The reason why is the city relatively recent joined CalPERS. And in order to join CalPERS, you have to put in a certain ante-up, it's called a side fund. And we've been paying an additional amount since we first joined CalPERS. And as our side fund is paid up in the next few years, the pension costs are projected to increase. While we finished paying our side fund and then the pension costs are increasing, we're going to see very little movement in our pension costs.
That's like over the next-
So that's good news, bad news. The, the bad news is we've been paying a lot for our pension in prior years because of the side fund. But the good news is that when everybody else is trying to get used to paying the huge increase in pensions, ours will be relatively the same and only increase a few percent.
How, 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 how long of a projection is that? I mean, so-
That's about a 20-year projection.
20-year? Okay. Well, thank you. I know we've kind of very vaguely have discussed this. And it was a concern. It still will be going into the future just because we, I think that's an important thing that we need to stay ahead of. But I appreciate your insight and thank you.
Yes. And another retirement cost that we should look into in the next year is what's called OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits. Primarily for us, that means medical for the retirees. We should look at that and start setting money aside for that.
Okay, there we go.
Where right now, we're considered to be paying as we go. We are paying the medical premiums for retirees when they're due rather than pre-funding and getting some money set aside for the future retirees.
I see, yeah. So that would be wise to make provisions for that particular OPEB. Okay. Thank you.
What about the, this, the change in the discount rate?
Pardon?
The PERS discount rate?
Yes, that was the increase that I was speaking of. Due to the decreased discount rate, our costs are going to increase.
About 140,000.
But the timing of the decreased discount rates coincides with the city paying off its side fund.
Okay.
I, I can, I did an analysis, I can share that with you. I'll send that to, by email, I can put it on our website if you like.
Thanks.
Thanks, Bob.
Is there questions from the community? Okay. All righty.
Wait, somebody's standing up.
Oh. No, that's okay.
I just have a, a general comment, which is, this is the first time that the community is getting to see this. And there's a lot of detail and information. And it's very difficult to formulate questions without being able to digest and look at what was the budget originally, what was the budget last year, what things have changed. And I just asked the city council to hold this over so that if there are questions, we could discuss them next time. And it really would be helpful to see the revenues on a regular basis, quarterly, so that you can see if there are trends and developments in them.
Well, being that, well, there's no really action. It's just to, oh, provide direction. I see. So if the direction is to hold it over for two weeks?
There's proposed action that wasn't agendized.
Oh, okay.
So if we held it over, they could properly agenda it so they could get the amendments in there.
We're requesting the, the proposed budget amendments as listed on the last slide, with the exception of the $13,000 harbor float hinges.
But it wasn't agendaed right.
Pardon?
The agenda doesn't call for that, does it?
Well, you could, you could, you could actually provide direction to staff to revise the budget for those five items.
It stated it to provide direction to staff if applicable. So that's if you chose to do the budget. We felt we did cover that.
And it would be the four items, not the five?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Oh, I mean, with Pam's request, I think we can hold it over two weeks.
Because then it's just questions and whatever, okay? All right.
Is, is that okay with you, Bob? If we hold it over for a couple of weeks, can, can we do that? And then maybe can we make an understanding that if, if the questions come up, maybe people can email Bob and let him know and give him an understanding of what he might need to have insight on, particular items in the budget that, that would be accommodating for yourselves and for him so that he, we can, we can all understand where the question's coming from and Bob can be prepared to answer those questions. I think that would be helpful. That's okay, Ms. Albers?
All right. I'm, I welcome questions anytime, so anyone can contact me.
Does, is, does any of the council want all of his backup? All of the stuff that brought into here?
Oh, I think we get it when we ask for it or we're looking at something. So, I mean, I have my budget and everything.
Okay, so, okay, you're good.
But I think that there are, I mean, I'm this, I understand it. I'm the same way. I need to digest the information and I will myself probably have a whole list of questions, but I would, I'll just email them.
Beforehand. Okay, great. Okay, I think we have direction.
Okay, so then we're not moving forward bud, with budget amendments at this point? Is that correct?
Yes.
Correct. We'll just do it all at the same time. Okay. I think that's it. Bob?
I think the direction is to come back with the budget amendments and answering any questions at the next two, next council meeting. Is that what you understand?
Yes.
I think also asking to get the information to the public prior to the meeting so that they can formulate their questions. Because getting it, as Pam says, get in right now, it's like, what does it mean?
All right. I apologize if this isn't the way you liked it last year. I think this is exactly what we did. So we will note that for any future budget meetings.
And that's okay. I guess it's if, if, if that, because this kind of thing would end up on the, on our website, correct? Like a regular budget. So if that would be on the website, then people could formulate what their questions are. So, okay. All righty. Well, we're moving on to item 11.
Good evening again. So this next item considers upgrades to casino-way restrooms. They're sorely needed. If you've been in it lately, it's not in very good shape. We've done our best to maintain it, but to maintain it to the level it needs to be with the high volumes that, that enter that restroom every day, it needs, it needs some help. It needs some, a major remodel. So the scope of work that we're trying to do is go in there and gut the whole inside. So get it all the way down to the studs, go in there and redo, upgrade the electrical, the plumbing, and then re-drywall that and then also re-tile it and set new fixtures. Okay? So that's, that's the scope. And to expedite the project, what we're planning on doing is we're actually going to take the public works staff to demo it. And we're using them also in a training exercise. So some of our public work staff that doesn't know as much in some of those specialties of construction like demo, we're going to actually train them. And myself and Jeffrey Hernandez, our public work supervisor, will be overseeing the project. Okay? Then we'll be bringing in contractors as far as electrical, plumbing, tile, to do all those specialty. So it's a, it's kind of a hybrid. And as long as we stay within the public contract code, we'll watch that so we don't get over that amount. Okay? During construction, the casino-way showers will be able to be used for the restroom. And also, we're looking at, demolition will take about a week, construction about four weeks, and then, and then finishing it up in another couple of weeks after that. So a pretty quick process. They're not very large restrooms. We just got to stay on the contractors. And that's part of what I'll be training Jeffrey Hernandez to do also is to be able to run a construction project. So he'll get some training too. And so-
How's the roof?
The, the roof itself, we need to do some more work to the roof, too.
Yeah, it looks a little bit thrashed. Would that be part of this project?
That's not part of this project. We'll go up there and make sure that it's in, in decent shape so we don't get some leaks. But that'll be another project on top of this. Okay?
Yeah, so if we're drywalling and there's leaks in the roof, though, that's a problem.
We'll make sure that it doesn't leak. We'll, we'll get it to the point where, because that being a tile roof and a lot of it, it's kind of a combination rolled and tile. So, you know, it's going to be a-
It's pretty brash. Nice to see, it looks okay, but, I mean, and it fits the architecture in the area, but I don't know if the tile roof is the greatest thing because it seems like some of the, some people throw rocks down and they like to break the tile and-
So if we're interested in that, I can bring back another estimate for doing a roof. Right now, what I'm trying to focus on tonight is getting in this bathroom before and get approval for that and go over the plans with you before we get to the May season. Because roof, you know, we can get set up and we could be doing even in the summer around that and make sure that we're doing it at the right time of the day.
As long as you know it doesn't leak right now, because I'd hate to throw-
Understood.
-a good money at a, at a project.
Understood.
Okay, great.
And then also, I had talked about traffic calming in front of that and doing a speed table. I'm going to bring that back to you also. So right tonight, we're just talking about the inside of the restroom. Okay? So that we can make this a pretty short discussion. So this, just take a look at the plans. And the reason that it's important to take a look at the plans is that if you approve these plans, then we get the opportunity for design immunity. Okay? So if council approves these sets of plans. And I've, city attorney's shaking his head, and I've been in the business for a while. And I know that if we get a claim, we'd like to at least have that design immunity to help us. Okay, so looking at the left side, hopefully everybody can see it, that's the existing condition. That's the demolition plan. So you can see that we have one toilet in, one toilet, let's see, we had one toilet in the men's. And we had two toilets in the, let's see, we've got one toilet stall in the women's unit and one toilet stall and a urinal in the men's unit. That's where our existing condition is.
So the men's are on the left. Is that a urinal up against the wall?
Yes.
On the back wall?
Yeah. So you were thinking that you're coming in from the street at the top.
Yeah.
Okay?
The men's is there.
Men's is on the, yeah, left.
Okay. And then, so what this will give us, it'll give us three toilet stalls in the women. And then the men will have one toilet stall and two urinals. And it'll make it ADA compliant, so the American with Disabilities Act. This is, this restroom is out of compliance with the American Disabilities Act currently. So this will make it compliant with the 2010 American with Disabilities Act. And imagine new tile, new grab bars, and also have some baby changing stations also within those ADA stalls there. They need to be large enough so that they don't conflict with the ADA turning radius, which is 60 inches there when you look at that right-hand side there. So you can see that's where if a disabled person came in in a wheelchair, they have to have that 60-inch radius to be able to turn around and, and operate within that stall. So that's usually what's controlling on these restrooms. And then also what's controlling is the area in front of the sinks for the disabled person to be operating in front of at least one sink. And then that's why you see also the padding under the sink on the pipes. So that protects in case a disabled person came up in a wheelchair and those pipes became either cold or hot to protect, you know, and they had shorts on. So all of those things are considered in these designs. And then also having everything at the right heights and the right dimensions. So you see everything's dimensioned out for that. And when somebody that's an ADA expert comes in to check this, they check every one of those dimensions, you know, within, you know, to a very accurate measurement. So we need to comply with that.
So you're putting more in, in the same amount of space?
Yes. There's some very wasted space in there right now. Yes. And the tile's not in very good shape. The, all of the fixtures are way beyond their useful life. So, you know, for, you know, like I've said in the report, you know, for the quality, safety and accessibility needs, it hits check, check, check on all of those things, you know. So visitor experience is going to be better. It's going to have better capacity so we can serve more people going to the restroom. And then we're going to get the disability access.
Very welcome improvement.
Yes, very welcome.
So, so, and you're saying in the interim, they're going to use the shower bathrooms? Are they going to be open? Because right now, they're not open very long, are they?
Yes, but we'll make sure that we do that. That was part of, when our RFPs went out, we said that there was, there was some questions in the RFP. And so we responded, you know, there's going to be construction at times, you know, on this restroom or that restroom. And then how they would handle that. Okay? And we'd make sure that these are open.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay? And so we're asking you to do three things. Approve the construction plan and then authorize the city manager or their designated procure the improvements for the purchasing policy, including bidding and awarding the construction contracts. So that means from this point on, we'll take care of it. Okay? We won't be coming back. You know, we'll report what the final results are to you, but we'll just take care of business. We'll author, you know, we're asking you also to authorize expenditures for the upgrade to the casino-way restrooms with a not-to-exceed budget of $60,000. And to amend the fiscal year 18 budget by increasing the harbor capital improvements expenditure count 10470-6547 by $60,000.
And then that $60,000 will go on this amended budget sheet, correct?
No, not good. We approved it's amended.
If you approve it tonight, it wouldn't be added on as a line item there, Annie, because we've amended the budget a lot of times during different council meetings. These are ones that-
Okay.
That you had approved, but we didn't list it as a budget amendment.
Oh, okay, okay.
So Bob, we're going to be putting in new sewers?
New, yeah, there's going to be new in the slab. We're actually going to go out there and cut the slab and making sure that the pipes within the slab, yes. New mains in the floor. Okay? That's part of what the public works crew is going to do, is demo the walls, get the, get the debris out of there. And then also to cut up the floor where the pipes are and get it ready for the plumbing to be installed.
So the only contractor we use is electrical and plumbing?
Electrical, plumbing, tile.
So is this going to need to be sprinkled also? Is that a good idea?
That's a good question. I can answer that, yes.
I would think, according to ordinance. It's something to look into.
Okay.
Okay, I got to ask these questions too while we're talking about the restroom. And I know you want to stay on track. And I, I understand that. What we're, what we're voting on here, accessing from the sidewalk off the curb, it's kind of a long step. Is there going to be any kind of a-
And that's the traffic calming piece that I said I was going to come back. And that could be the speed table. That, that maybe I need to get, you know, the public involved and, and tell them what, explore what we're actually going to be doing there and see if everybody's satisfied with the, that being installed because- that being installed, because that would be quite a change for Casino Way. So that's why I wanted to be fully prepared.
You mean the actual crosswalk?
The crosswalk.
I don't think there's a problem with that, because we need a heads-up there, because I get... It's like people coming out of Vons. People come out of that restroom when they shoot out and you're getting towards that stop sign. You're looking at the stop sign, and then people shoot out of the head. Sometimes it's...
So a speed table is 22 feet across the top, flat, and then it has tapered approaches for 10 feet going into it. So it'd be like a very large speed undulation.
Well, I think just... It's just a crosswalk like we have at Vons works great. I mean, what I'm saying is that people stepping off the curb that are going to go over to the head, that's a big step. And then traffic, all they need is like those slow signs 20 feet out or something plus a crosswalk. Right now, there's no crosswalk at all. There's nothing there.
So that's why I wanted to bring that back as far as the potential for...
I don't know about the modification you're talking about, about bringing this big hump there.
Exactly. That's why, you know, and so there could be some traffic calming, and we may decide as a community that we don't want that. Okay? And that's good. That's what the discussion is about, to make sure that that's a very safe core... Because there's a lot of pedestrians that are walking in that street, and we need to make sure that it is a complete street, that the vehicles are going slow enough, the paths can occupy the space going across safely. Okay? And so, you can see that was much more discussion than I wanted to do tonight. Tonight, I wanted to make sure that we could get going on this restroom.
So far, so good.
Okay?
I'm good.
I'll make a motion to approve the construction plans and authorize the city manager or designated procure improvements to authorize the expenditures for upgrades to the restrooms with a not-to-exceed budget of $60,000 and amend the fiscal year '18 budget by increasing the Harbor Capital Improvements expenditure account by that $60,000.
I'll second it.
Your second comment from the community? Call for the vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Item number 12.
Is Bob Lee?
Is Bob Lee?
No, Bob's here.
Yeah.
I can introduce this one.
Please, you go right ahead.
This is a carryover from last meeting where we went... Where you went through the updating of the purchasing ordinance. There are two goals here. One is to make it comply with the current law. It was kind of out of date. The second is to increase the purchasing authority of the city manager up to, would still be the lowest level of cities. It's currently really, really low, and raise it from $5,000 to $25,000. So that, in order to do this, you need to amend the ordinance. And so we've attached a redline version of the ordinance, which just shows all the changes that are made, and then a clean copy of the ordinance that you would actually be introducing and awaiting all readings tonight. And then at the next meeting, you'd be adopting it. I think you went over this extensively last meeting.
We did.
Any questions? Bob and I are here.
If we have no questions, is there a motion?
So moved.
No, we need to... Then the appropriate motion would be...
Introduce and waive all readings of an ordinance of the City of Avalon repealing and reenacting Chapter 4, which is the purchasing system to Title III Finance of the Avalon Municipal Code.
So moved.
I'll second.
Move and second. No further comments? Call for the vote.
All eyes.
Okay, it is 7 o'clock, and I believe we're going into closed session.
Yes, we have four closed session items. We have one liability claim, Island Enterprises. We have conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. This is significant exposure to litigation. This concerns the discussion of a letter we received from the planning director. Number three is conference with legal counsel, counsel initiation of litigation. This is to discuss the saga of the e-buses. And number four is public employee appointment, city manager. I do anticipate a report of action on item number one.
Okay, and we're going to say goodnight to Tony and the rest of you, because you may be there for a few minutes. Thank you.
Yeah.
Matt?
Okay. We are back from closed session.
And there was one report of action on item number one with dealing with Island Enterprises. The city council is direct the city attorney to deny the claim for actions occurring within the last one year period.
Okay, no further discussion?
Me neither.